Yeah, we.
Thermostall is.
We're spread out. Just want to make sure I'm sitting in the right place.
Hey, John.
Austin. Okay, I'll, I will make sure that I'm speaking on the mic.
At this time, I'd like to call to order the Water Works Board meeting for June 10, 2020 at 7:05 PM. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge the allegiance despite all light in the United States of America and to the Republic, for its standing, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
At this time, I would also like to announce that we are streaming live on Facebook for this evening's meeting. Mr. Troxel, would you please take roll call?
Yes, Madam President. We have for the Water Works Board Kevin Conley.
President.
Thomas Schmidt.
Here.
Robin Arvinaides.
Here.
Another member present is Rob Getzloff.
Present.
Caleb Johnson, let the record show that he is absent. Attorney David Austin.
Present.
Fire Chief Robert Patterson.
Present.
Deputy Fire Chief David Meyer.
Here.
Police Chief Pete Sormas.
Here.
Media Support Jim Onick. Dan Jen, IT Director.
Present.
Jeff Hewitt, Public Works Director.
Here.
Jim Gorman, Director of Operations.
Here.
Robert Volkman, Town Manager.
Here.
Robin Teal, Recording Secretary. Mike Troxel, Clerk Treasure, present.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda for the Water Works meeting, the minutes of the May 13, 2020 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero. Next on the agenda is claims. Mr. Troxel, are there any additional claims?
No, there's no claims at this time.
So move on claims.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero. Next on the agenda, we move to reports. Are there any additional reports from Mr. Volkman?
No reports.
Are there any additional reports from any council members?
No ma'am.
There is no new business, there is no old business. At this time, is there any business from the floor? Any business from the floor? This meeting is adjourned, thank you.
Call to order the Redevelopment Commission meeting for Wednesday, June 10, 2020. The time is 7:08. We'll add Mr. Getzloff to the roll call for the Redevelopment Commission meeting. Minutes of the May 13, 2020 public meeting.
So move.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Claims, any additional claims, Mr. Troxel?
No, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Passes four zero. Any reports from staff on redevelopment?
No reports.
Any council member reports?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. At this point, we'll move into presentation slash public hearing. Mr. Austin, are all the proofs of publication in order for this public hearing?
All notices are in order.
Thank you, sir. This is the annual presentation of Kennedy Avenue Economic Development Allocation Area, Plum Creek Economic Development Allocation Area, and Shops on Main Economic Development Allocation Area. At this point, should I turn this to Mr. Troxel or Mr. Volkman?
I think Mr. Troxel's prepared. Can I get a hear of this?
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. President. Annually, we need to have this report given to the public, and this report is sharing the revenues received and the expenses paid for our three different TIP districts, and it also has reflects what debt services we, we pay on this and what our ending balances are in the, in these three districts. And you should have a copy of that with your paperwork showing that, that annual report that was sent to the DLGF on actually April 9th before the due date.
Thank you, Mr. Troxel. At this point, I'll open things up to the floor for any comment regarding Mr. Troxel's report. Any comment from the floor? Hearing none, I'll close from the floor and bring it back to the board. There is no action to be taken, I believe, correct, Mr. Austin?
That is correct. It's a citation in your record only.
Thank you. There's no old business, we'll move into new business. Resolution 2020-3, a resolution of the Shererville Redevelopment Commission concerning the 2021 budget year determination for the need to capture incremental assessed valuation within the Kennedy Avenue allocation area in all matters related thereto. Mr. Troxel.
I'll refer to.
Mr. Austin.
The Indiana Code, Indiana Code 36714-39 provides a mandatory requirement that a determination be made by the Redevelopment Commission on an annual basis on whether you need or you do not need the TIF increment captured from your allocation areas. Here in Shererville, we have three such areas. We annually capture the increment from those allocation areas in order to service debt, which is in the form of bond issues and is for purposes of funding capital projects which are planned and/or on the books being planned for further development. This is, this has been occurring here for 20 years. You are capturing increment. It is necessary for you to capture increment based upon your debt service activities, bond issues if you will, and to service the Redevelopment Commission projects and activities statutorily. There will be three of these resolutions tonight, one for each of the allocation areas. They are presented to you in conformance with statutory requirements, and when we're done tonight, these will be delivered to the overlapping taxing units so that due notice has been given to those units that this increment capture action has occurred so that they can plan for their budget coming up. That's the reason for the timing of this, it's in advance of budget preparation going forward.
Mr. Austin, just in terms of action tonight, are you looking for initial approval and adoption for the three allocation areas?
No, sir. This is in the form of a resolution, there'll be an approval or no approval.
Okay. Very good, thank you. I'll consider a motion on the first allocation area, Resolution 2020-3.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Resolution 20-20-3, which is the Kennedy Avenue Allocation Area.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Passes four zero. Thank you. Moving on to the second allocation area, Item B, Resolution 2020-4, a resolution of the Shererville Redevelopment Commission concerning the 2021 budget year determination for the need to capture incremental assessed valuation within the Plum Creek Precision Allocation Area in all matters related thereto. Does anyone need further clarification on this one?
I just have a question, Mr. Austin, that the explanation doesn't change on all three of them, correct?
They are idoneical under the statute and in the manner and method by which you establish these allocation areas. Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Resolution 2020-4, which is the Plum Creek Precision Allocation Area.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Passes four zero. Thank you. Item C, our third allocation area, Resolution 2020-5, a resolution of the Shererville Redevelopment Commission concerning the 2021 budget year determination for the need to capture incremental assessed valuation within the Shops on Main Allocation Area in all matters related thereto. Pleasure of the board.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Resolution 2020-5, which is the Shops on Main Allocation Area with the same explanation that Mr. Austin gave on the other, on the two. I move to approve.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Passes four zero. Okay, moving on to Item D, consider acceptance of application for facade improvement program, The applicant is Kelly, what's the pronunciation, Mr. Volkman?
Mackey.
Kelly Mackey of Mackey Insurance, location 27 West Juliet Street. Favorable recommendation by the Town Facade Advisory Committee by a vote of four to zero. Mr. Volkman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The Mackey Insurance has applied for a facade grant to do improvements to her property. The committee met and reviewed those and is making a recommendation, favorable recommendation of the grant amount in the amount of $10,531.96.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Volkman?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Volkman, that follows the normal percentage of, of allocation?
Well, she's doing actually a lot of improvements to the property. These are the ones that qualify, you know, we have to evaluate. Most of the facade things are dedicated to things that are visible from the street. So there's areas, she's doing a roof on the building, so, you know, parts of the roof are not visible from the street, so those are actually not taken into consideration or, or the percentage of the roofing is only allocated. So the amount of the grant is reflective of the amount that she would be entitled to based on the guidelines in the program.
Very good, thanks.
The comment and the question, it's great to see continued participation in the facade program.
Absolutely.
How many businesses now have participated?
Well, this is her second one. We said, let me think off the top, there's probably been seven or eight, and I've got one that's, you know, right across the street that's going to be coming in. The law offices that have moved into the old T-Tech Photography.
Ah, okay.
They're completely renovating the inside, they're working on it, they're getting ready to start on the outside facade. We'll be reviewing their facade improvements with the Plan Commission here coming up really shortly, and they also will be applying for a grant.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Volkman. Pleasure of the board on Item D.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the considered acceptance of application for facade improvement program for $10,531.96 for the Kelly Mackey from Mackey Insurance. I move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Passes four zero. Okay, any business from the floor regarding redevelopment? Any business from the floor? Any business from the floor? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned, we'll go into the Utility Board meeting.
The Utility Board meeting is called to order for Wednesday, June 10. We accept the same roll call we did for the redevelopment. Minutes of the May 13, 2020 public meeting, pleasure of the board.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero. Any additional claims?
No, Mr. Getzloff.
Thank you, Mike, appreciate it. Pleasure of the board.
So move on claims.
Second.
Motion is second, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero. Reports from staff, any reports from staff?
No reports.
Council members?
No, sir.
Okay. There is no old business, no new business. I'll take any business from the floor regarding utilities. Any business from the floor regarding utilities? Any business from the floor regarding utilities? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned, we'll move on to the Town Council meeting.
Good evening, I'd like to call the Town Council meeting for Wednesday, June 10 at approximately 7:20 PM. The roll call will stay the same as the Utility Board meeting. First item on the agenda is the minutes of the May 13, 2020 public meeting.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero. Claims, Mr. Troxel, any additional claims?
No, sir.
Mr. President, move to approve claims.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Reports, any reports, Mr. Volkman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I, I know that the police department has had another police officer resign, and so keeping in, in track with what we've done the last few months where we've had some retirements and stuff to stay with Chief Sormas's staffing plan, I would recommend that you authorize Chief Sormas to proceed to replace that officer to maintain our quota of officers on our department.
Thank you.
Motion to authorize Chief Sormas to replace the outgoing officer.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. Mr. President?
Any more reports, Mr. Volkman?
I believe Mr. Gorman has a report.
Mr. Gorman.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. I just wanted to read something into record. We received a memorandum from Latonya Spearman, who's the Lake County Assessor. The subject is essential government function reassessment property inspections. This was dated May 6th. We just received it miles long, our IT guy, he got it on our website, and I wanted to read it into record. On May 20th, 2020, Governor Holcomb issued Executive Order 20-22 extending the mandatory statewide stay-at-home order. Hoosiers are still directed to stay home except for certain services and activities deemed essential. Specifically, the order provides discretion to local officials to deem certain activities essential government functions, thus exempting certain individuals from the stay-at-home directive. Reassessment of the real property is an essential function of local government, specifically the assessor's office. In order to accomplish that function, employees and contractors of the assessor's office routinely perform site inspections. This function is essential to reassessment, and thus any individual performing that function should be considered exempt from the stay-at-home order. At this time, I have instructed any individual performing this function to inspect exteriors of property, including taking measurements and photographs. Anyone with questions may contact me directly at assessor@lakecountyin.org, and then there's a phone number, 219-755-3100. Regards, Latonya Spearman, Lake County Assessor. So I just wanted to bring this to your attention to advise the public Shererville residents, if you see anybody out there, it could be them. This will be posted on all our social media, Facebook, the town website, Twitter, whatever we got, and Miles is going to post that, so I just wanted to bring that into record. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Mr. Troxel, any reports?
Thank you, Mr. President. No, no report, but I have some correspondence. We, we've annually been donating to the Lake Central Dollars for Scholars, and I received a couple of letters from some of the recipients of the scholarships. One was from Grace Generis, who received $500 scholarship, and she will be attending the University of Florida, studying psychology and Arabic in hopes to eventually go into law school. And the other recipient was from Grayson Hill. Grayson is going to be attending Purdue University in the fall and pursuing a nursing degree. So I just wanted to let you know we were recognized in our donation for the.
Gen Items. I'm so, I'm sorry. Chief Sormas, do you have a report?
Nothing at this time.
I would like to make a comment just to thank Chief Sormas. We had some activity, I'll let you explain, Chief, if you want to get into it, last Tuesday in the retail corridor, and I don't want to get into the detail, let you speak to that, but just thank you for your leadership and your being proactive, Chief. It was an unsettling time, and I think your communication and measures that you took were outstanding, especially the communication, and I think police presence put a lot of people at ease in an uneasy time, for sure. So I just want to thank you for your, your leadership.
Well, thank you. Without going into the fine details of the program that we implemented immediately, we just said we received some credible threats, and then we responded upon those threats, and we're still working with the District One and the Northwest Regional SWAT team to address some of the threats that do come to town, and they're sporadic and they're fragmented, so we just have to stay vigilant and move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and your department as well.
Chief Patterson, do you have any comments?
I just wanted to let you guys know that our recently purchased engine is a E1 Typhoon, 1,000 gallon pumper or 2,000 liter pump on it, has been put in service this Monday and has been being utilized a lot in the last few days. So we're very happy to let you know that it is in service and it is functioning for the town. We had it out earlier for anybody that wanted to see it. Of course, they've been kind of busy again today, but at any time, if anybody would love to see that engine, it's at Station One, that's all they can find, and I just want to thank the Town Council and everybody again for helping us with purchasing that vehicle. So thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Keep it looking like it did tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Deputy Chief Meyer, do you have anything?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Public Works Director Jeff Hewitt.
No report tonight.
Okay, back to the council, any council reports?
No, sir.
Okay, then, and now at this time, we'll open up, is there any public comments from the audience regarding just the gen items? Any public comments on the gen items? No, no public comments, we'll move into, there's no old business, and we'll, first item of new business, Item A is a public hearing. Mr. Austin is the proof of publication on ordinance 1953.
Mr. President, the legals are in order for this public hearing to be conducted.
Okay. Ordinance 1953 is an ordinance annexing certain contiguous land to the town of Shererville, Lake County, Indiana, on all matters related thereto. The petitioners is Altoff Homes LLC. At this, at this time, I'll open up to the public if there's any comment.
Mr. President.
Yes.
May I offer just a brief explanation, foundation for the reason here?
Yes.
The matter that you will actually be considering on, on your agenda tonight is the resolution for the fiscal plan for the proposed to be annexed parcel. There's a 116 acre parcel sought to be annexed. The law requires two readings of an ordinance. You've had the initial reading, that was last month. The public hearing was noticed and advertised for tonight, and this is the time you will receive comments, if any, from the public concerning the fiscal plan and policy. Fiscal plan and policy that you have before you is prototypical for Shererville. It contemplates that all improvements and activities on the proposed parcel are developer-driven and developer-responsible. So that's the item that's on your agenda, the resolution for the fiscal plan, which will then permit the ordinance to be considered for adoption next month or at your direction.
So we do not take any action on the ordinance itself?
You've already introduced it, the introductory reading is complete, the public hearing tonight is on the fiscal plan.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open it to the floor, any comments on the floor? From the floor? No comments? Then we'll move into the Resolution 2020-5 is a resolution of the Shererville Town Council to approve a fiscal plan and policy for proposed annexation of a parcel of real property to the town of Shererville, Lake County, Indiana, and all matters related thereto. The petitioners are Altoff Homes LLC.
Mr. President?
Mr. Austin, is there any other explanations that we need on that?
Unless you have questions, and I'm happy to answer them, and I know Mr. Volkman is also.
Mr. Volkman, you want to give a description of the location of this, of this lane?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. This is the property at the north end of Burr Street in Shererville, on the east side of Burr. It, it's northern border is Turkey Creek and Maryville corporate border on the east, and it backs up to Foxwood North, and the other border, the west border is Burr Street.
Thank you, Mr. Volkman. Pleasure of the board on the Resolution 2020-5.
Mr. President. Move to approve Resolution 2020-5.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Mr. Troxel, you take a roll call, please?
Yes. Kevin Conley?
Yes.
Tom Schmidt?
Yes.
Robin Arvinaides?
No.
Robin Getzloff?
Yes.
Motion carries three one. Thank you. Item B is consider acceptance of application of facade improvement program, $10,531.96 from the Redevelopment Commission agenda. The applicant is Kelly Mackey from Mackey Insurance. The location is 27 West Juliet Street. This came from a favorable recommendation by the Town Facade Advisory Committee of four zero vote.
Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Thank you. Item C is consider acceptance of donations for $4,413.80. Mr. Troxel, would you be happy enough to read those for us?
I will be happy enough.
Will you be happy, though?
Yes. The donations to be accepted as of May 31, 2020 were donations to the COVID-19 Relief Fund. We received these in-kind donations from the BMW of Shererville, which were hand sanitizers and wipes. The total of the in-kind donations totaled $4,413.80. That completes my report.
Mr. President, move to approve donations, as read by Mr. Troxel.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Thank you. At this time, we'll open up to the floor for any comments from, from the floor. Please step up to the microphone and state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Margie Schwartz, President of the Shererville Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here tonight to ask for approval and consideration of our 57th year corn roast to be held on July 31st. As I said, this is the 57th year. The businesses in Shererville want to get out and have exposure to the public again and get the economy going, and the residents want to have some normalcy brought back to the town of Shererville and to their lives. And so I would like to have you consider accepting the date of July 31st for us. We will follow all of Governor Holcomb's directives as to the policies that will be put in place, and in fact, we have even gone above and beyond what he's asking for in some of the things that we have decided to put in place for the corn roast this year. We will double the area of the beer garden, not the amount of people, but the physical area, and we will have signs and we will have people there to monitor that there are only a certain number of people in there, and, you know, if you have questions about anything, I would be more than happy to answer them for you. Like I said, the businesses really want to get out there and be, have the exposure for their, their businesses again.
Mr. Volkman, do you have comments from, from the information that you've gathered so far that you can talk about to Margie? that you can talk about to Margie?
I know that the chamber is, wants to carry this out on the 31st of July, which is the typical date where sweet corn is available locally here in the area. You know, it's pretty much a tradition, and certainly the town has always cooperated with this chamber. We value our position and relationship with this Sheroville Chamber. It's a great event for the community, and, you know, I wholeheartedly support it. And the nuts and bolts of this is all done on a staff level. The chamber's been doing this for 57 years before we even had a park, any formal park. So the people that do this know what they're doing. The people on our staff know how to run this event as well, know how to set it up and support the chamber. So it's a reasonable request. I know the Park Board is dealing with this as well. I know they had some reservations of having a large event this early, but I think through planning, careful planning, the number of people that are going to be able to attend, all that can be regulated. I don't know what to anticipate. I don't think anybody knows what to anticipate during this strange time that we're all going through, but I think it's important event for the community, and it's important for our business, businesses in Sheroville who want to participate in it, whether it's a consideration by you or we take it back to the Park Board and let them resolve this.
So, Margie, there was discussion earlier this evening about everything, and I think there was a few items of information that maybe perhaps were unclear during the Park Board meeting, so we're asking the Park Board to reconvene very quickly to reconsider with all the correct information in front of them, including the very objective governor's plan and executive order as, you know, our primary source for the decision. And I think everything else, as Mr. Volkman mentioned, will come in terms of logistics and planning, you know, after this date hopefully will be approved and we'll move forward. And we all acknowledge the importance of the corn roast, the tradition of the corn roast. Yes, people need to, they want to get out. We've had an excellent partnership with the chamber, and I think everyone sees that. But we're going to send it back to the Park Board for reconsideration to let them do their role as a board, and then hopefully we'll have some news for you maybe mid to late next week.
Okay.
So that's, hopefully I spoke correctly for us.
Thank you, Mr. Conley.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments? I'll be glad to answer anything I can for you.
Yeah, Mr. Volkman and Mr. Norvessid will be in touch with you.
Okay. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Absolutely.
Take care. Good seeing you.
Is there any other comments from the floor? Any other comments from the floor? No comments? Have a good evening. This meeting's adjourned.